Good evening, everyone. The Wednesday, June 20th, 2018 meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners will come to order. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. And now, as you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Sir? I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Leidy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will receive comments from the public. Is there anybody here for public comment? Mr. Mayor, I believe we can close.
I think we can do that. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. There are four items there. You had the backup. A motion would be in order.
So moved. To approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Back to you, Mr. Leidy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a system development fee analysis. This is something that's being done pursuant to a general statute which was adopted last year to legitimize and authorize municipalities to charge certain impact fees. But I believe the presentation on this will be provided by Ms. Amy Miller, the Finance
Good evening. I know we had a budget workshop regarding the system development fees, and basically, they calculate a buy-in method to our current assets, less any debt and donated assets. We came up with a fee of $1.77, and this study was conducted in accordance with state statute by a professional engineering firm. Like I said, the fee's going to be $1.77 per gallon, and that will be applied for whichever land use will be applied. And both the system user fee and the design flow schedule, which describes how many gallons each land use uses, will be the fee that we charge for development.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Amy?
Nothing has changed since the presentation, has it?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Amy. Any comment from employees who are also citizens and members of the public? Mr. Mayor, I'll just again reiterate that this is being done because the fees charged for these, for water and sewer impact fees, must be tied to an actual cost. And that was the purpose of the study that was commissioned here, was to ensure that the fees that are being charged would be in line with the actual costs. And that's why the study was done. The study report has been provided. It had to be provided for public inspection for a 45-day period. The town has to hold this public hearing before it adopts the new, or actually approves the fee schedule. And if there's no other comment on it, I think this is a matter that's appropriate for board action. So we'll conclude the public hearing at this time, and the board may take action to approve that study.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion by the board at this point? Hearing done, and a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the system development fee analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
And do I need to also, does that include the consolidated fee schedule?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Only the fee analysis. So is, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor of adopting the system development fee analysis signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is new business. Item one is adoption of the fiscal year 1819 operating budget. Cliff?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet, you have attached a memo detailing the changes from the results of your three scheduled budget workshops, as they pertain to the recommended budget. You have the proposed FY 1819 budget ordinance, the proposed CIP schedules for the general fund and water fund, and an updated consolidated fee schedule. Staff is asking the board to adopt the budget, appreciative of the time and input and direction that was given. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Board, are, is there any one of us questions? Mike?
No questions.
Renee?
No.
Well, okay. All right. I've heard no questions, and so I believe a motion would be in order.
I will move to adopt the budget as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 1819 operating budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
Question, does that include the proposed CIP request and the updated consolidated fee schedule?
That was part of my motion.
Okay. Just a second.
Great. And the second still holds? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Dowdy Park Phase Two and Three.
Good evening. Included in your board packet is consideration for two separate motions, and that is for the awarding of the base bid and alternate number five for Phase Two slash Three development of Dowdy Park. The second part of that is authorization for the town manager to move forward with the execution of a contract for those two parts of the bid. As a side note, the restroom construction, which was included in that bid package, has been separate, and we are going to go ahead and rebid out that portion of the project that will be read advertised this week.
Great. Thank you. And remind, remind us of the schedule, anticipated schedule for this construction.
The phase of schedule, we anticipate that construction would be initiated within the next 30 to 45 days, and we anticipate a construction schedule through mid-February.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for David while he's at the podium? Okay. Seeing none? Great. Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you.
So I think for discussion purposes, a motion would be in order. Can we do this as a single, can we do this as a single motion?
Two.
Two motions.
Two motions.
Okay. Then the first motion would be to award the project.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award the base bid and alternate bid five to Godfrey Construction LLC, and a price not to exceed $336,200.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, then we have a motion to award the project for the specified amount to Godfrey Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then the second motion would be authorization for the town manager to execute the construction contract, and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract for Dowdy Park Phases Two and Three, and the same amount as previously noted.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to execute the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Small Business Committee summary.
So for several months now, the Local Business Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Renee Cahoon, has been meeting to discuss the issue of workforce and affordable housing. This was based on a charge that was provided to them earlier in the year after they began discussions about the issue. Several of the members noted the urgency and importance of the issue and how it's becoming an increasing concern over the last several years, and certainly something that's been talked about for a long time on the out-of-banks. So essentially what we've done is we've put together a report that summarizes the committee's discussions regarding the issue. In the introduction to the report, we talk about the specific charge that was given to them. And then we get into defining the problem. The committee actually came up with a problem statement, and I can go ahead and read that. I won't spend too much time, but "Local businesses rely on seasonal workers to maintain existing services and/or grow their business. Most significant barrier to finding seasonal workers is the number of available affordable housing units. Often, businesses must find/provide housing to seasonal employees to guarantee that they will have an adequate seasonal staff. Business growth has been restricted by workforce issues, and in some cases, businesses have had to reduce hours of operation and/or cease operation due to a lack of employees. The housing stock available to seasonal workers continues to shrink as more redevelopment occurs and as more units convert to short-term rentals. While Nags Head may be able to provide limited solutions to this problem, workforce housing must be addressed as a regional issue." So that kind of summarizes how the committee felt about this issue. As you can tell, they're very concerned about it, but they feel like that while the town can do some things, it really needs to be addressed as a broader issue amongst the county, the towns, and possibly multiple counties. During our discussions, we looked at a lot of information, a lot of data. We talked about zoning recommendations. That was one primary focus of their discussions. We've listed out a whole host of zoning recommendations that could be considered. This is certainly a laundry list, and it's somewhat exhaustive. It does not take into consideration what may or may not be consistent with our comprehensive plan, that's something we'll have to evaluate further as we look at our ordinances. They certainly wanted to focus on allowing businesses to provide housing on their own properties and possibly providing incentives for that. That seemed to be a large focus of their discussions relative to zoning. They also talked significantly about flexibility to improve their properties. Beyond that, we outlined in the report some actions the town could take. You know, obviously, the town could consider building housing on property that it owns for its seasonal workforce. The report gets into a series of regional recommendations that we could pursue. Some of those would have to be pursued from somewhat of a political standpoint. Attached to the report is a series of documents that we feel like would help inform future efforts should the board decide to pursue any of the options we've talked about in the report. One of the reports included as an attachment is the Affordable Housing Best Practices report that was done as part of the economic diversification plan by Dare County. There's certainly a lot of information here. The reason we're providing you this tonight is just to give you a chance to talk about the committee's work, to acknowledge the committee and thank them for their work, and see at what point you may want to further pursue any of these actions. So essentially, that's a summary of what the Local Business Committee had for you, and we certainly thank them for their efforts.
Great. Thank you, Andy, and we are grateful for their efforts. I'll ask the members of the board to weigh in, but I thought it was a very comprehensive overview and a thoughtful, thoughtful discussion. What strikes me, what's still a little frustrating, though, is that at this point, the chamber is essentially going to the various boards and asking each of them to take their own actions. And what's still missing is any kind of regional gathering and comprehensive approach and to bring into the discussion some creativity to, I mean, we're all, we all live inside of our own boxes, and to some degree, to have, you know, an opportunity to, for a broader discussion, I think feels as though it's being, being missed. So I'll just ask the board members. Mike, any thoughts about this?
I echo what you say about that. I think they're, they're very straight-lined on looking to us to resolve a problem when there's a lot more opportunity in the outlying areas of the county to do this work, but we all have to get together to do it.
Renee?
The committee did work hard, and thanks to Kelly, who did a lot of work, and Andy as well, that did a lot of work. We had a good committee with a lot of input, but I think that somehow we're missing part of the picture, not us, but the reports that are coming out. You're right, we need to work together as a community, not just as individual town. But I think there was some information missing from the report from the chamber, such as how many housing units are the bridge people taking up.
Right.
You know, we need to, there needs to be a little bit more thoroughness to the report because that, once the bridge is built, that's going to have X number of units vacant that possibly will go in back to the supply chain somehow, be it weekly rentals, monthly rentals, whatever it's going to be. And I think we need to look at the total picture.
Yeah. I agree. Not just how many units will come back into the market, but really, how many units of different types do we, do we need? And the split between, you know, workforce, the real seasonal housing, and any other forms of housing that we may need. Suzy?
I'd just like to thank you and your committee and all the staff that worked really hard on this. It really is a great, comprehensive report. I think there's a lot of perhaps innovative ideas in there. However, many have been discussed many times, and I do think it does require a greater There are so many moving parts to it, and I don't think it's anything we're going to solve overnight, but I think there will be opportunities to, to move forward with some perhaps baby steps to help us move toward a solution. Not a, not a, I'm not going to solve everybody's problems, but I think there's some baby steps we can take to, to help along the way, so.
Thank you. Webb?
I can't add anything else that had already been said on the housing side. I could only say that I think that, I don't think we should lose sight of the living wage concept and making sure that we add that to the conversation, that people need to pony up a little bit more money to some of the summer help.
Yeah. Okay. Good, good point.
And that, that has been lost in the whole conversation.
You're right. You're right. Thank you. I, I will say, based on the work this committee did, and this report, I think that we are better equipped to go forward in the conversation than anybody else will be, based on everything that I've heard. And for that, I'm, we're very grateful to Renee and staff and the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is item H. Cliff?
Skip. Gee.
Oh, did I skip something?
Well, it is item H because I don't have anything to present, present to you at this time.
Oh.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's a heading at the bottom.
You're reading my mind.
I blew right past you. I'm sorry.
You're just reading my mind.
Okay. Good. All right. Then the next item on the agenda is our items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
I have one item, but it has seven parts.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask the Finance Officer to come back up to try and navigate the board through this process. The, these seven items are all part of action the board needs to take in order to go ahead and complete the contracting and the financing for the funding for the Beach Nurishment Project. And we've got a couple of things that have been added because of the fact that we have been authorized by FEMA for their portion, so we'll need you to, to amend a previous motion that have authorized me to enter the contract after the attorney's review to add the FEMA portion to that, and I believe that's the first item. Amy's worked mighty, mighty hard on this, has done-
A lot of people have, Cliff.
-an outstanding job, and we're very appreciative of that.
Well, this is definitely a group effort, and two years in the making plus. And Cliff's worked hard, David Ryan, I mean, it's Andy, Roberta. It's, it's been quite a ride, and we've had a great support staff in our bond counsel and our financial consultants. I actually had a phone call with the LGC today, and he feels like we are in really good shape for this. He has a lot of confidence in the loan that we're doing, and of course, a lot of confidence in the people that we're working with, so that goes a long way as well. So our bond attorney, as well as Attorney Leidy, thank you, and Andrew Howell, we've all been working together, fine-tuning these bond orders and resolutions. So there's one bond order and one resolution for each borrowing. We're to do, we are going to do two separate borrowing. One borrowing is for the original town portion, I guess, that we had planned on doing, the 2.3 million cubic yards. And that resolution is to select PNC as our banking partner. We are asking to do a forward-closing loan, which means we're going to do a soft close with the LGC in July, so we can get all the contracts signed. But the clock, I guess, or interest doesn't start ticking until January. And that, we found that even though the rate was a little bit higher on that, that saved a lot of money because we were able to cut four months of interest off of that. So the interest rate on that is 3.08 percent. We're going to do our hard close in January of, January 14th, 2019, and our final payment will be July 14th, 2023, with semi-annual interest payments, but the principal payment will be once a year beginning. The first principal and interest payment will begin in July of 2019. The second resolution is for the FEMA loan, and we had to get a loan from FEMA again because we didn't want to put our fund balance in any jeopardy between waiting to get reimbursed from FEMA, and then also, they withhold 25 percent of the grant until the project gets closed out. And that would put the original project in jeopardy of not having enough fund balance if we had to dip into that. So we have to get a loan for that, and that's going to be the Series B resolution. Again, a forward-closing loan. That loan will be, again, all the same logistics as far as closing in January. It'll be a one-and-a-half-year loan with the possibility of a prepayment at no penalty. That is, again, the banking partner was PNC at 2.82 percent, closing, we're going to borrow the amount of the grant, which is $16,233,837.14. 2.82 percent, one year and a half, same semi-annual payments, hard close, January 14th, 2019, the first principal, it's interest-only, I'm sorry, until the maturity. So the first interest payment will be July 14th, 2019, and final maturity of principal and interest at July 14th, 2020. And again, we have, the LGC has a lot of confidence in this project, and I had a really great conversation, and so we kindly ask for your help. We are at the home stretch, and I'm looking forward to get these signed tonight and sending them onto the LGC. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we need to do these as individual items and motions, and we did have the backup in our, in our package. So for, we'll put them, we'll have motions and put them on the floor, and then if there's any necessary discussion, we'll have discussion after we've, we've brought them up. So a motion on item H1A, award the FEMA portion of the Beach Nurishment Project, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next is item B, which is authorization for the town manager to execute the construction contract for the 2019 Beach Nurishment Project. A motion would be in order?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. Item C is the bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds of the town of Nags Head. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item D is a resolution providing for the issuance of the special obligation bond, Series A motion would be in order?
Motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, the next item is item E, which is the bond order authorizing the issuance of special obligation bonds of the town of Nags Head for the FEMA project. So a motion would be in order on that item.
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm sorry, and I should have said aye. Getting tongue-tied at this point. The next item is item F. A resolution by the Board of Commissioners providing for the issuance of a special obligation bond for the FEMA Grant Project, Series 2019B. A motion would be in order?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And finally, consideration of Amendment Three to the Beach Nurishment Capital Project Ordinance. A motion would be in order?
Motion to adopt Amendment Three to the Beach Nurishment Capital Project Ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this issue? Hearing none. Then all those in favor of Amendment Three to the Beach Nurishment Capital Project Ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you to the board also for all your support.
Well, and I was going to say, you know, this is a big agenda. I mean, these are, these are significant items, this budget and this beach nourishment. These are, this is really, that went fast, but the reason it did is because this board prepares itself. I mean, we've done, this board's been to the, to the various meetings, paid attention. You guys have read your stuff, asked your questions, and I am grateful for that. It makes my job a lot easier when we get here in the- makes my job a lot easier when we get here in these meetings. So I thank all of you very much as well. Thank you, Amy.
Don't leave tonight. We're going to get you done. The LGC's waiting.
Okay. I want Cliff, staff, everybody who worked on that. Um, that was a tremendous amount of work. I mean, and, and I went to one of the meetings in Raleigh and, you know, the people who deal with the numbers and their consultants, and I'm very grateful for all of them because I could do that. So, thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Um, Commissioner Fuller, item I1.
Um, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Um, at our last board meeting, we received a memo from Andy and Holly, and it was a discussion update on the focus, UDO, and included suggested strategies and schedules. I came away from that meeting with, with two specific questions. And I'll take them one at a time, but one was as it relates to accessory dwelling units. In what we were presented, I did not see that we were focusing accessory dwelling units in commercial zones and not in residential zones. But in talking with people that were on that committee, they clearly started from the framework, as I understand it, that they were not talking in residential zones. They were talking about accessory dwelling units in commercial zones only. And if you reference the nodes that were in what was presented to us, all those pretty much are commercial zones. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page that when we're talking about somebody moving forward and developing proposed, uh, standards or ordinances or proposals, that we're not talking about creating accessory structures in residential zones. And that's the question I would like to ask. Um, is that where we all are? Or is that just where I am?
Okay. Thank you. Renee? I mean, Suzie?
Looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
Um, well, I think while serving on the committee, we were looking at a variety of options. And there are some, uh, accessory structures that actually sort of already exist within the town. Um, I, we've, we've sort of tasked the, the planning board with, with looking at alternatives or the technical committee. And, um, I kind of wait and see where that, where that goes, you know? I think there's some issues with, um, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't there some things that we cannot regulate such as like granny flats and stuff like that?
Right. Well, the, um, if I remember correctly from some of the discussion, there is a form of accessory structure called a granny flat, which the state imposed, and up to 300 square feet for a medical purpose that we cannot preclude in any district.
And I'm not talking about state standard. I'm talking about our guidance that we're giving to the people that are developing these standards.
Okay. All right.
I'm not talking about Airbnb. I'm not talking about anything other than accessory dwelling structures. And what I'm talking about is in neighborhoods west of the bypass, because that's where all the residential is. There's some small amount of residential between the beach and the bypass. And then you look at the combo on the east side of the beach road.
Okay.
But I'm pretty much looking at the residential neighborhoods on the west side. And I thought that was the focus of the group. And I just want to ensure that what my understanding is the same as the understanding of everybody.
Okay. Let me ask Andy or Howie, because I, I was remiss in not going back and looking at the final text or asking them in advance about the final text of the comprehensive plan. Did the comprehensive plan go so far as to specify locations or did it just say that we would look at accessory structures?
It was more of a general statement. You know, it didn't get district specific. Um, and so at this point, we were going to talk about this with the technical committee and we were going to have a discussion with them about what districts might be appropriate and the standards that should apply. And so, I mean, obviously, the question of commercial versus residential districts would come up.
Okay.
And then from there, you know, I think, um, you know, we have some members from the advisory committee that are on the technical committee, and we have minutes from the advisory committee meetings and we could sort of help try to guide the committee on what the intent of the advisory committee may have been with reference to accessory dwelling units. And certainly any comments from this board would be fed back to them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm going to look at that mic. I'm sorry, Renee?
Question. Mayor Perotam, you were, um, very involved in the focus committee. What direction was that committee heading in as part of the discussion overall? I'm sorry, I had to go back and refresh myself, but-
Well, it's been a couple of years, but, um, I do recall us having conversations about like C4 and areas like that. Um, but I don't, I really, without going back to look at the document and look at the minutes, I mean, I, I can't tell you specifically. But I think there may have been some consideration for, uh, you know, size of lot, those kinds of things is, if, we didn't use the word granny flat, don't get me wrong. But if, you know, if you had the septic, you had those, the, the space on your lot and you needed a mother-in-law suite, for lack of a better term, could that be a possibility? Could that also lead to possibilities for maybe workforce housing or something like that? But without reviewing the minutes or going back to read the specifics of the document, I can't say with, with certainty.
Mayor, may I make a request?
Yes.
Since we have three new members essentially on the board, could we get those specific minutes so we could all refresh ourselves before we get too far down the road of technical making changes without everybody thoroughly understanding where we are perhaps?
Well, and, and yes, and I-
I want to move forward.
Right. And the other thing that we've talked about is a workshop, uh, since we do have new members, um, and since they are in the midst of this, um, uh, sooner rather than, than later. And it seems as though it really needs to be very soon that we, that we do that. Perhaps, you know, um, sort of soft pedal this issue until we can get the, get the workshop done and really kind of catch everybody up. Mike? I'm sorry.
Well, I agree with what Renee said, but, you know, in the residential section, there's only a couple of neighborhoods that would have the septic capacity or the lot coverage that could do that. That's, I think that's the neighborhoods that Webb's mostly concerned about. I mean, it makes sense in a commercial district for workforce housing and mixed use in some of these other areas would create that residential, commercial kind of flow that we were seeking. And it's been sought after for years. So in that area, it would work well. But you run a, a hard line, start putting up, you know, extra home, extra small houses in some of these upper end neighborhoods.
Well, we sort of already have some of that in the historic district with the-
Yeah, we're talking west side. So then you'd be, you know, certain neighborhoods, Naggs Head Acres, South Ridge, the new section, would have lot sizes that are big enough to accommodate that.
Right. Um, what it's, it really sounds like we need the workshop before we go further with this, frankly.
A workshop regarding accessory dwelling units or?
Um-
Well, I don't have, if, I don't have to even address my second one if we have a workshop, because the second one to me was way beyond me in terms of understanding it.
Right. What I would suggest is that we, um, all, all the board members should have a copy of the comprehensive plan. What I would suggest is that the members look then back at the comprehensive plan, select your hot button topics, let's give those to staff so that we can narrow down the discussion at a, at a workshop and, uh, do that at the earliest convenient time.
And I believe, I mean, we still have the focus on our website. So the minutes from our meetings, from the committee meetings, are they still on there? So they should be readily available on the website now from the, um, the first portion of developing the policy.
Okay.
You know, not the technical portion. So are they easy to find?
We can-
Yeah, they're, they're focused. Yeah.
See, and why I have these two, these are my two concerns, but if, well, when I read it, I don't know what it means.
Okay.
It's too broad. It doesn't give clear direction. And, you know, I, I agree with the workshop and I'm fine with the workshop, but if reading the comprehensive plan and stuff like that, what I don't want is somebody charging out, doing what they think is correct without us giving specific guidance. And like I say, I, I know where I'm coming from on accessory dwelling units in residential neighborhoods. I couldn't even figure out what the discussion that I could present on ho, home occupations is by reading what was in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Um, let's, let's take that as direction for now. Let's get some emails out. Let's get a schedule put together, get a deadline for us to get our issues back. And then, um, give staff enough time to, to prepare to respond to those. And then let's have a workshop and do that at the earliest convenience.
So this would, this would be somewhat to allow the board to provide us feedback on any issues?
Yeah. I mean, we're going to determine, you know, it's probably going to be a couple of items from each of us is what I'm going to guess, probably with some overlap. So I don't think it's going to end up being a very big, I, I'm not anticipating that we're talking about the whole, the, the whole document again. I think we're just talking about, uh, a handful of issues that we all really want to clarify. And I'm, I'm guessing that that's going to end up being a, a short list.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be Commissioner Kahoon.
Thank you. Um, I asked that this be put on the agenda because since the board approved a site plan, the neighbors in the surrounding area have become very concerned. While I recognize that staff approved this, nobody in the community knows what was approved or not approved since the board approved its site plan. So if there are changes made, I think that the public and the neighbors deserve to know what's going on in light of the amount of fill that's been brought into that site.
Okay. We can go ahead. So, um, since our last board meeting, uh, several people observed the work occurring at this site. And obviously, this is the site of the Sherwin-Williams project that the board approved, I believe, back in April. So since that time, we approved a, a land disturbance permit that allowed them to go in there and place the erosion control measures and, and do the filling and grading they need to prepare the site for the building project. We have not yet issued the building permit for this project. All this work is being done currently under the land disturbance permit. So when several people, including members of the board, observed what was going on, we went back and, and looked at everything. Obviously, the, uh, site plan that the board approved referenced a, a building on pilings. And so what, what you see here in the site is, is the fill pad. And there's, there's this fill pad around the perimeter here, which is at a certain elevation. And it sort of grades up from the roadway to the, to the building. And then you see a sort of a stepped up fill pad here. And so, uh, obviously that made everyone question what was occurring. So we went back and looked and checked the building plans, checked the original plans that were submitted to the board. And the, the site plan references a piling foundation. The building plans talk about a stem wall foundation, which is different. And so at that point, um, we placed a stop work order on the project. Uh, we asked us, we asked the contractor and the engineer and the architect to provide clarifications on what, what's occurring there. Um, that gave us time to figure out exactly what was going on and request, um, proper information in order to, to make a decision on what would have to happen. So what we learned is that what they really intended to do was build this project using a stem wall instead of a piling foundation. And so from there, we tried to determine how that impacts what's occurring on the site. And so, um, is this, uh, could you go ahead and start the presentation? Advance the slide. Yeah. So here, and I know this is really hard to see, this is the original site plan, and this is the revised site plan that they submitted to us. And so you see, this is the grading plan. You have, um, grades all over the site, top of curb, bottom, bottom of curb. You've got the basins here and here, and then you've got the, the corners of the building, and then the adjacent grades. And so we compared the original grades with the piling foundation to the proposed grades with the concrete, uh, stem wall foundation. And really what they're trying to do is do exactly what they originally proposed. They're just getting from the eight foot adjacent grade to the required 10.2 using the stem wall instead of the, um, pilings. And so, you know, obviously, when, when the board reviews a site plan, it has certain expectations. And so when we, we look at changes that occur after it's approved, um, we obviously have to approve minor changes from time to time. Or if we feel like it's a major change, we will ask it to come back to the board. Um, in this particular case, um, we felt like the, the replacement of the stem wall from the pilings was, was preserving the original grading and, and fill plan. And so we, we felt like because the ordinance doesn't regulate the foundation type, that we could approve the change without bringing it back to the board, which would require two more months of review. So essentially, we, we believe we've worked out all the details with the contractor in terms of providing us with sufficient information to review what's going on. And we're reasonably assured that what they're going to do meets the standards in our ordinance. And, um, that's essentially where we're at. The, this diagram, which I believe you had in your packet, shows the stem wall. And obviously, it's just a, a concrete block foundation. It's backfilled and then the slabs poured on top of that. And, you know, this, this shows the adjacent grade coming up to the stem wall at eight. You know, had that been a piling, that could have still come up at an eight. And then what you see here is a brick veneer, which will go outside of the stem wall. So that's just mainly for aesthetic purposes. There's the actual top of floor and the brick veneer will actually come up above the top of floor. And that was a, a choice by the architect. Um, so essentially, that's, that's what we know at this point. And, um, we have verified that the original grading is preserved, that the original drainage plan is preserved. They have placed more fill than originally proposed with the pilings, but that fill will disappear behind the stem wall once they pour the footer and they backfill the stem wall.
So what would have happened with the piling foundation is that if you hit the, the top of the fill line on the left side of the wall, which is what shows on the, basically what shows on the grading plan, that line would have continued to the right underneath the building, uh, with a piling plan, um, and, and a wood frame floor above that. Um, and on a grading plan, nothing that happens under the building footprint generally shows. I mean, it's, we, there's, there's, there's no indication of what that grading is anyway.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. And forgive me for my lack of knowledge, but typically for buildings on pilings, wouldn't some of the stormwater go under the building?
No. I mean, and, and maybe David could speak to that a little bit, but, you know, the engineer, well, maybe we just can't address that.
I think people in the neighborhood are worried about the amount of raised sand there affecting their stormwater.
Understood. Um, typically for a pile foundation, all the stormwater measures are outside the footprint of the building. Um, there has been one or two applications that have used stormwater underneath the building, um, probably going back 10 to 12 years ago. Um, that was, um, two projects, uh, along, uh, East Grey Eagle Street. Um, but locating stormwater under a building is a bad engineering practice. Um, we know last year in speaking to residents who had flooding underneath their houses, that with prolonged periods of standing water, those piles will deteriorate quicker. And so we have had several engineers request to have stormwater located under the building, um, and have discouraged them from doing so. Now typically for pile foundations, there is an ancillary benefit of having that area open underneath. And there is the ability to infiltrate, but we don't encourage that. open underneath, and there is the ability to infiltrate, but we don't encourage that.
And with the stem wall and everything, all the slopes are going to be met?
Yes, we have gone back through and looked at all the grades, the slopes, especially along the north property line, which is the larger concern, and they coincide with what was approved by the planning board and the board of commissioners.
I would only request that somehow in the future, the public be made aware of these internal changes that are approved, because they're seeing what the board approves, and that's what they believe, and then all of a sudden, they're seeing something different. So, that's all I would request.
Yes, ma'am. That's the, me sitting here, the takeaway from me is, you saw all this, the public sees this additional fill on the lot. Now, how do we inform them about why and what that means? And how do we do that?
Yeah, that was my observation to the staff, that, you know, all the fill shows up at the beginning of the job, whether it's inside a stem wall, whether it's going to end up inside a stem wall or not. So, it looks like a pile of extra fill there, and it's actually, and it struck me funny that it is fill, but because it's inside the stem wall, it's fill we don't regulate. I mean, it's basically fill, it's just part of the foundation, and communicating that somehow, that, and just having the public have that expectation that on this project, when you see the fill come in, there's going to be the fill, and then there's going to be another pile of fill on there. Don't be alarmed by the extra pile of fill.
Somehow, we've got to figure out how to-
Yeah.
-be open with it.
Another, I mean, I think we're going to see more of these applications, I don't know if that's a fair assumption or not, but at the, at the grade of this site, and the amount of fill that was brought in to, to get it above base flood, I think we'll see this type of application more often, especially as we get into lots like this, that were, what, four feet?
Right. In this case, it's four feet, and it's really, the amount of fill is a function of the, the current elevation of the lot. So, in this case, the current elevation was, was five feet, and they were trying to meet the regulatory flood elevation, which was 10 feet.
That's a lot of fill, and, and this is typical of lots that we have left, so I think-
We've seen a couple on residential applications, and I think we've got one more commercial application in the pipeline, that are, you know, filling more than three to four feet.
Neighbors are concerned.
Yes.
That's something I think the board should consider, and then, you know, I, I'm not suggesting we slow progress, but you don't regulate foundations, and there's a, there's another way we can get the word out when this changes, but, you know, to let people know that, that there's more fill there for a reason, it's not fill that you would typically think of as fill, it's part of the foundation. But, that's another step in the process possibly. But I, I do believe you're going to see more and more of this type of-
I, I think that's probably true, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
May I ask a question to Andy?
Sure.
Andy, when you mentioned earlier, they said they intended to do this, why, what was their answer when you said, why didn't you propose this with the first, when it went before the planning board, before the- Well, we met, we actually met with them today, we had a coordination meeting with several of their representatives and our staff, and their answer was that we, they never intended to do the piling foundation that the civil engineer showed it on the site plan, but their architect, you know, there was a lack of coordination on their end on what their intent was.
That doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry. I think what should be submitted is what we're going to, they're going to build.
You know, and if you go back and look at everything, there, the architect, I mean, they, they designed their drawings to a certain percent when they go to planning board, they're not complete 100% construction drawings, and the, the architectural elevations showed a brick skirt, but then the site plan said pilings, so they, there was a lack of coordination between the civil guys and the architect as it came through. But we clarified that now, and we've got the drawings that show everything consistent, but that's what happened.
All right.
But the way to avoid that is for the board, I'm not suggesting this, but, is to regulate the foundation.
No, I wouldn't want to do that, but I, I think that we, I'm, I'm sure going forward, staff will be alert to discrepancies between the architectural and the civil drawings, that having had this kind of issue arise, and, you know, whether, you know, when you can spot it.
It's not the regulatory thing I'm worried about, it's the openness with the public, that they deserve the right to see exactly what's going on the site, not have it changed after the board has approved it.
Right. Mr. Walters, or Webb? Okay. Thank you. Renee, you had something else you wanted to say?
Yeah. I'd like to thank this board, the governors in the process reviewing the CRC appointments, as I was told earlier this week, but I'd really like to thank the Dare County Board of Commissioners, the towns of Duck, Southern Shores, Kill Devil Hills, this board in Nags Head, and Manio for their letters of support, as well as some communities down south. I really do appreciate the support shown pretty much by all the local towns, especially those that took action and wrote letters, and it's much appreciated. So, I just wanted to publicly thank them for that.
Thank you. And we're glad you, glad you're there.
Well, we'll see what happens as the month progresses.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the other, any other commissioners have items to bring before the board?
One quick thing, last Thursday, first farmer's market was a resounding success, and I hope everybody comes out tomorrow again, and more people come.
Next month.
Next month.
Next month. Excuse me. Next month, next Thursday, next month. But I, I thought it went real well in my compliments to all the staff, and everybody, and everybody for that.
Great.
It was a really good thing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Susie?
Oh, well, I'd like to echo what he said, it was an awesome farmer's market.
Good. Good. I'm, I'm excited about that. Mike? Okay. Thank you. So, I'm the last thing between us and the door. You have, under the mayor's agenda, a consideration of a letter in opposition to House Bill 507, land use regulatory changes, which really put the burden of incomplete and failing infrastructure on the community rather than the developer. And, and I don't know whether this, at this point in the legislature, has been approved or not.
It's in, it's in committee, it was in committee as of yesterday, I checked.
Okay. Okay. So, we, we felt as though it was appropriate to get a letter out in opposition to that piece of legislation. And, so, I, I guess I would ask your concurrence on getting that letter out as soon as possible, and hopefully having some impact on that, on that bill. Yes?
Would you like a motion to-
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's go and do that by a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter regarding House Bill 507.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. Thank you. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, I missed the farmer's market Thursday because I was in Washington. You know, the, the powers that be are not going to give up on the offshore drilling. I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to have to keep beating that back constantly. We've been fighting it for, what, over 20 years now, and, and my guess is, we're going to have to fight it for probably at least another 20 before oil is no longer in control of what's going on in Washington DC, if ever. Any other business? Yes, ma'am.
May I ask you to do one thing?
Yes.
On behalf of the local, all the local businesses from Corolla to Ocracoke, the Social Security Office comes down here every Tuesday in June to meet with all the foreign students and issue social security cards, instead of them having to take taxis, or find transportation, or employers take off and go to Elizabeth City. And I think it'd be really nice if we thanked the Social Security Office in Elizabeth City for making that effort every year to come down here, every Tuesday in June.
Okay.
I think that's a great service that they provide.
We, we will do that, and if y'all would prepare a letter, we'll, we'll get that out to them. Thank you. Hearing no other business, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much.